Okay, we are recording. Still waiting for the host to start the meeting.
Yeah, I got you all in the meeting room or in the waiting room, so that way I don't have to mess with you.
I'm six feet apart.
Probably not.
Okay, we'll be calling Don Reefer and I'll text John when he can come on to the Zoom meeting.
Okay, we are live and recording.
Ask your question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever to be dusted for all.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, following your order. Take your most, it looks like we have a key motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
Second.
Motion's second, any other discussion? You're not all favor I?
I.
Oh, Terry, uh, Rich from, are you out there this morning?
I am, how are you?
Yeah, how you doing?
Um, not much to report on today. Um, we do had, we did have a bid letting last week through the DOT for a two mile stretch of pavement east of Grafton going to Mitchell County. We had a bidder on that. Um, I'll get you more information next week. We put on the agenda for that. So just so you know, that's coming up and then we will have a budget amendment for Jackie when she is ready to receive that too.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else got questions on?
That's all you got today?
That's all I've got today.
Wow, okay. Uh, I don't believe so.
And I can talk to Mark after the meeting about a situation he called on this morning, so.
For sure.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for?
I'll stick around and listen in case you do.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Now, correct.
There we go.
All right, there we go. So we need to reset right away.
One day.
Public hearing date for one day because of.
Publication.
Publication.
I would make a motion to reset the hearing date, public hearing date.
The hearing date to May nineteenth, correct?
Yeah.
I will second that motion. Okay, motion and secondary discussion. You're now all in favor I?
All right.
I, both, motion, Terry. We'll have that on Tuesday, May nineteenth. Um, we have an engineer's report for DD forty-six.
Yes, I do.
Lat nine and DD thirteen, lat three.
It's John real quick, now we're gonna be done that quick.
Oh, sorry, must move over to the, the, um, BMW.
We can probably get John to do it real quick.
Okay.
Here's the report.
You give me one.
Oh, yeah. You brought your homework?
Yes, I brought my homework.
It's a sticker for that or?
Yeah.
Did you get the heads up on it or what?
No, I just sent you the day I had signed some documents back forward.
Okay.
Dex says here, you can just go take this one, we usually.
He had any trouble seeing.
Well, it's all some errors in it, but that's. Well. Well, you're studying the tile lines, not, you're studying with the twenty-four.
Oh, there he is.
John though.
He's coming. Does it let him in or? Unmuted?
He's muted right now, that's for sure. Oh, I think I tried muting. Go ahead, John.
Find out, so I started walking down the south, well, somebody gobbled back by the house, I stuck up back by the house, then somebody gobbled down by the south, back and forth, so.
John, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing okay, sorry, I'm kind of.
That's okay.
Rocking apparently.
We're patient with all this stuff, so.
Definitely what it takes, isn't it?
Exactly what it takes right now, so, uh, we're going to look at accepting your report for DD forty-six, lat nine, and.
Thirteen's not done.
Oh, just DD forty-six, lat nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
The other one's coming.
Yeah, the DD thirteen was supposed to be here this morning for you guys, but, um, I had one, one more correction, so I'll get that to Jackie, uh, this afternoon or tomorrow morning, so.
Okay, sounds good.
John.
Yeah.
Can I, did you look at a report, it was probably done about twenty-five years ago, that Leo Scogan put a new, brand-new eighteen-inch main in that whole area right there, through that area, besides the old main that was existing.
No, we did not see that. Uh, we had realized.
It should, it was a county letting, I'd say at least twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was a new main put in by Leo Scogan.
Oh.
And there was another main that was put in there, you know, a new eighteen-inch main.
Okay.
They dumped it into Shute's about right where you're doing, the same thing. And, but there, there's two mains out there, the old one, the one that Leo Scogan put in.
Really? No, I, okay, um.
I, I don't know, we brought the other one up there, and I don't know if that was an eighteen-inch or twenty-four that we, where they connected. You have to ask, uh, my son, I guess, or else Ron Shute, he would know for sure.
Okay.
Pretty sick, does end out there at that big intake.
You'll see what, no, and this is, because of the small, we're relying on Deirdre to send us information. We got the stuff from two thousand thirteen, we did not see anything on that older piece.
Well, there, there was another main that was put in by Leo Scogan, they did a lot in. And that should be at the, it's the old Russ Meyer or somebody, but that's where that main was put in, it was a county letting.
Did it replace the old one, or are they both better functioning still?
I think they're both still functioning. That's why I think he's, there's some of that old main that's still breaking up, but there's still that other main that Leo put in.
Okay.
I think it should be some more investigation out there on that, on that main.
Yes, this definitely changes things. Um, we met with, um, Rugland.
Chris.
Chris, we met with Chris out there on the ground, he didn't mention anything about it, he just mentioned there is the one.
He probably don't.
Tile main going to the west there, or coming from.
He was a young kid when that was put in.
Sure.
Want me to do some digging?
We should. Yeah, can you see what you can find on that, Jackie?
Okay, yeah.
Let's hold off on scheduling anything on this one then, because that, that would change everything. If it's only twenty-five years old, then.
That's what I was gonna say, maybe thirty, I'm not, you know, time slips by fast. But I, I think I, I didn't make the bid on that one, I just, just gotta remember.
Sure, you just know that it was there.
Uh, Leo Scogan got the job.
Okay, yeah, well, that, if that's there, then if all we're looking to do is replace the capacity of the original as part of that pair, then we should be able to get this one back quite a bit. The, the report itself would still be valid, we just do a smaller tile and just parallel the other.
Right, but I mean, there's, there's two mains out there right now, the old one and the one Leo put in.
Okay.
The oldest one.
So I move, we, uh, uh, just postpone it or whatever you want to call.
We just want to accept it today and, uh, do more investigation.
Yeah. Yeah, Jack, if you could take a look and see what you could find, um, from that, that period on lateral nine, that would be good. Um, and we'll get an amendment and we can try this again here in a couple of weeks.
Okay. That sounds good.
Um, yeah, and then BD thirteen, like I said, there's a, uh, I made a change in the engineer's estimate, so it wasn't ready on Friday to get here to you guys, so I'm gonna get that finished up this afternoon and get it to Jackie, and it should be on the agenda for next week.
Okay, that sounds good, so.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, John, hey, John, when I got you here, I, I left you a message this morning. Uh, talked to Jim Hudson over the weekend, I've had some questions about DD four up by Emmens, Minnesota, and apparently one time you'd looked at that, I guess.
Yes, we did a, we did the survey and had the plans ready, um, and then the landowner said that he was just gonna clean out his section on his own.
Okay.
And so we just put it on the shelf, the plans should be ready. The one thing I do recall there, and I don't know if the landowner would have addressed it, was, uh, the road culverts at the upper end of the.
Is it right on the county line you're talking?
No, um, I, let me see if I can pull that plan set up real quick.
So I actually want to go into Winnebago County and do some cleaning out in there, and there's no, that's not part of the district, you know, they don't have any right of way in there as of yet, but the landowners in that area, it sounded like they'll give us the right of way, so Jim can work on that, I think, if we, we get to that point, and then.
Sure.
Think there's five hundred feet left of that ditch that nobody ever cleaned, which is right, right out between sixty-nine and Apple Avenue. Um, they're talking about, and to clean that, I think, so.
That, that actually sounds familiar from what we've had before.
Yeah, because we were talking, talking about with Rich too on that over the weekend or end of the week, and sixty-nine, the culverts aren't the problem there, it's probably the, on Apple Avenue, some of the restriction is there, it's not a super big culvert, but it's probably, it's pretty flat in there too, I guess, what it's on.
John, what we had there was, uh, we have twin eighty-fours underneath Apricot, which is Worth County's, and then it goes through a triple eight by eleven box culvert the state has, which one cell is more than enough for what we're dumping into it. And then when you get to the county line, there's a single eighty-four inch, so obviously the restrictions at the, the county line stretched. And what we had done years ago, when we, we shot some grades from our flow outlet flow lines of the twins down to the box culvert we had, I can't remember what the fall was, we had fall, and then from the box culvert to the county line, it was flat as a pancake, so.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I went out last week and, and tried to measure, re-measure, re-measure the culvert sizes and an archaic way of doing it, but I kind of confirmed their, their eighty-four inch twins on the inlet side, on the, on the upstream side, and then the single on the downstream side.
Okay.
I don't know if that's something you guys have in your documents as well, but I know the DOT cleaned that box culvert out two years ago, and it silted back in already, so obviously one cell is ample, one cell is about, uh, three times the size of what, well, at least twice the speed there for the twins dumping into it, so.
Right. Quite a bit of restriction with trees and beaver dams on the down, downstream side in Winnebago County is where the problem is.
Yes, yeah, uh, so maybe I can share my plans here, so, um, oh, well, let me share my screen. Um, if you have the plans here, though, we didn't, we were set up to look at that piece, we did do a visual inspection, um, aerial photos, we did go out and drive that section. Um, our survey was actually just for lateral one, but yeah, I can see exactly what you mean, that whole stretch, let's see, sixty-nine is there, sixty-nine to, you said five hundred feet?
Well, the first five, yeah, between sixty-nine and Apple is still in Worth County.
Yeah.
Uh, they only touched maybe the first fifty or a hundred feet, it looks like, and then there's, and it's not really restricted too bad there, there's a lot of trees, they're mainly on the south side of the ditch, the north side's fairly clean. A lot of the restrictions start just on the other side of Apple Avenue.
Yeah, it's, just looking at this, again, this is an older set of plans, but, you know, from five years ago, so I haven't looked at them a while, but they, uh, it is definitely quite a bit thicker.
Yep.
As you get west of Apple.
It's not any prettier than this five years later, so.
I can imagine. Um.
So I could pursue it a little bit more with the landowner, see where they want to go with it.
Um, yeah.
You know, they just wanted to get the beaver dams and some trees out of there, and they, and they had permission to do that, but they wanted to build it back to the district. Without right of way, we can't do that, I guess, so.
Yes, you know, well, and I would say maybe do a little bit more digging for right of way, because the stationing we use, from what I remember, is based off the original plans.
Okay.
And it looks like from those original plans, the district went about six hundred feet into Winnebago.
I think we gotta go a little farther now, though, to get the trees.
Okay. Okay, I follow you now.
Yes, that's okay.
So some of it, you would have additionally, you'd still need to pick up, so, um. But, yeah, I think what we had anticipated when we did that study before was we probably have to go into Winnebago quite a ways to get that outlet, so.
According to Russ, looked up a little bit, I think originally, they went to get the outlet, they did go quite a ways in, back in nineteen oh six, of course, but they did not get no written agreements or anything like that, they just were allowed to go in and get the right of way, I guess, and so we don't have easements and everything we need to actually build it back to the district, so.
Do you know if that.
In the original plans, they straightened it out a little bit beyond that six hundred feet, back in the hundred years ago.
Do you know if that's a drainage district in Winnebago it dumps to, or is that?
Doesn't look like it.
So everything would have been done, but, again, looking at my photo, and I've only got just a little bit past that six hundred feet, it's literally straightened, so I, I would agree with Rich, just on the face of it, if there's nothing else downstream that would have done the work, the four did go down quite a bit farther, so.
My understanding is I think Winnebago's drainage district is south of there.
Yeah.
Quite sure why, why it is.
Well, actually, actually, it, it jogs up into Minnesota and dumps out into, uh, Kirkup, what, not, what is it, what?
Well, then it comes back into Winnebago, that's where the district starts.
Oh, then, okay, okay. So it jogs through Minnesota and, and into Winnebago, and that's where it forms a district.
Yeah. Where it comes back into Winnebago.
Yeah, that was one of the goofy things up here, is you run into that state line, because I know that there's land north of the state line that drains in through that lake.
Oh, yeah.
But there's no drainage district in Minnesota, from what I understand, north of the line there, so.
Yep.
So the district can't assess that, but.
Well, I know that there's a landowner that has property on the east side of Emmens, and they, he's taxed, because his water drains into our ditch, then goes back into Minnesota, he's taxed on that water on the Minnesota, on the west side of Emmens, and he's really upset over that.
He is.
Twice, yes, have, uh, Samuel's, he lives up there by the golf course. But that water comes back around that way.
Okay.
He's been here before, yeah, he was there before.
Minnesota water.
Yeah, it's Minnesota, Iowa, then going back into Minnesota, but he was taxed again because of that, the drainage district on Minnesota's side was taxing, because this water came through Iowa and.
So there is a drainage district there in Minnesota.
Probably Minnesota, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, because there, there are provisions that you can tax across the state lines, as long as there's a drainage district there.
Oh, maybe we need an annex.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that process, because this is the first time I've come across it specifically in a project we're working on, but I know that as long as there is an entity that serves that same purpose, that you can levy an assessment against them, and then they would collect it, kind of like the common outlet stuff we did in DD twenty-three.
Correct, correct, and that's probably what should be done in Winnebago County too, but I get, I'll get ahold of landowners, I think what they were estimating was is about forty hours' work, so about eight thousand bucks, and two or three of them, two or three of them are more than willing to get it done, it's just depends on how far they want to push this, they just, it's fair to bill it for the whole district, but we can't do that. So I'll see how far they want to pursue this versus just getting it opened up and get some flowage to go on, and if they want to pursue it more down the road, we can, so. It's good enough there at least, so.
If you're just looking at right of way, that's a pretty simple thing. Agreement.
Yep, Hudson said he could handle that, so.
Yeah, he wouldn't take anything, so. You need anything else on that, let me know, but we'll get back and, and watch.
Okay, I'll do that, John, thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, John, we appreciate your time.
Yep, thanks, guys, we'll talk to you later.
All right, uh, BMW control specialist, twenty-twenty, just strange district spring.
Kenny, I got a phone number for you.
Okay.
Eight-eight-eight.
We'll just look. Nine. Nine.
Your question's.
Or question answer.
Nine-one. Five-one, or, nah.
Three-eights.
Yeah, eight-eight-eight.
Yep.
Eight-six-zero. Zero-zero-four-zero.
BMW.
Morning, Don, Kenny, I'm sure I got you on speakerphone, what kind of supervisors?
How's everybody doing over there?
Good, morning, Dan.
Morning. Good.
I think, uh, I haven't said this for probably at least two years, maybe more, I think we actually need some rain.
It's getting close.
It's to that point, I think, we can use a little, so.
Yeah, so, anyway, I got the, uh, the ditches looked at for you up here this spring.
Okay.
And what I've done, actually, I guess, first off, I'd like to explain that, uh, I don't know if you guys were aware, but my, my wife had been sick for several years and things had progressively worsened last year, so I kind of dropped the ball on a lot of my customers with all the time I had to spend with her. And now that I'm back full-time, I'm trying to get some of these counties caught back up, and that's why you have two quotes this morning.
Okay.
We got the ones that I was supposed to look at last fall for two thousand nineteen, and then the ones that were to be on the schedule for twenty-twenty, which is the second one. And also I did get in contact with, uh, Dan Martenson up there.
Okay.
And he swears that we sprayed that section right there by the highway, back the last time we were in there. I think what he saw was the guy spraying the rest of the ditch and assumed they did.
Okay.
That's that area right there, uh, right by town that had the trees taken off, and it's getting pretty brushy again, but the situation with that one was, it was supposed to be done, uh, with the contract in two thousand sixteen, but when the guys got to that section, in fact, I've got the note right in front of me here, that they said that, that it needed folier in two thousand seventeen, well, we've had so many wet springs that we haven't been able to get in there at the right time.
Okay.
And what I mean by that is, the one side, they crop right up to the edge of the ditch. And when we do folier, we've got such a short window there between when we can get in there and spray after the trees are fully expanded, and make sure it's late enough so that we get them killed, and the crop is still short enough, we can straddle it.
Okay.
And we just haven't been able to do that the, the, the last few years. Now, I do have it back on the schedule, I think what he did is he thawed them off, and now he's still, you know, I had a, I had a pretty good conversation with him, I mean, it was, it was cordial, but before the conversation ended, he had to tell me how, how worthless we were for what we charged.
Okay.
That, you know, I, I told him, I said, yeah, we discussed that before.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, that does, that does need to be done right there, I got that on the schedule, and we're gonna put that as, as a top priority, because
Okay.
the trees are small enough yet now, they don't need to be cut, but some are gonna have to be drilled and sprayed at the base, because they're tall enough that we're not gonna be able to spray them without getting some stuff off, you know, off-target.
So that.
But most of it, most of it's still small enough, we can get over it with the folier and do it economically.
So that'd be the stretch between Apricot and sixty-nine, you're talking there, right, south Emmens?
Right, right in town there, yeah.
Yeah, so then, a couple of years ago, you sprayed some in the fall, that section did work then, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, what, what he saw was the guys working, because we, in fact, I've got the quote right here, I, I had it quoted to do that section.
Okay.
Uh, but we did do it in the fall, and it was with a, a basal treatment.
Mm-hmm.
And I can tell you right now, if we would have sprayed that one section, we sent you a bill for one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. That bill would have been about five thousand dollars more if we would have done that with a, a basal.
Sure.
Because that stuff is that much more expensive.
Okay, just as long as it worked.
Right here, but, but I wasn't gonna argue with Dan about it.
No.
That doesn't, that doesn't get you anywhere.
No, just as long as it worked, that's all I needed to know, I mean, it's, uh, I, I'm not exactly sure where he was at up there either, I was thinking too, that it might have been that stretch between Apricot and sixty-nine, but because that is getting a little woolly in there, I see.
Yeah, see, that's the situation on that, is this, is, is, then on the schedule to get done, with the way the weather's been.
Yep.
It just hasn't, uh, we haven't been able to get it done.
I understand.
Like I said, it's, it's top priority now, because when I looked at it, I'm concerned too, with the trees that been, you spent a lot of money taking trees off there.
Yep.
Yeah, we need to get that thing knocked back down and get it on a regular maintenance for it looks like the rest of the ditch.
Yeah, because they're getting to be six, eight feet tall now, I'm bitter, so.
Yeah, that's, that, that goes back to what I said about having to do a base on some of those.
Okay, appreciate it, okay.
So, that was pretty simple, and then the other, the other quote I have there is for the ditches uh, that were supposed to be on the schedule for twenty-twenty, that's basically pretty much all of Deer Creek in that area, and then just a couple of other ones down by, uh, uh, Hamlet Town. Another thing I wanted to mention too, on that bolt for this year, I did get that, uh, I did look at BD number one, which hadn't been on the schedule before. Yeah, that one is pretty woolly as well, in fact, I don't know how far east we're gonna go on that, because it looks like it, the, it looks almost like a, uh, natural creek back there in section seventeen where it slowly ends. And I guess what I'd go, what I'd like to do is just send the guys in and tell them to spray what they can, and if it gets too woolly, just, you know, we'll mark it that, but.
Okay, that's one where, is that the one, Gordie Hagan involved in, oh, yeah, is that who we're talking?
No, I thought, is that the one just west of town here?
Yeah.
Uh, just south and, and a little bit west, yeah.
By, right, right off Ballard Avenue there, the.
I don't have my map, I got it on the map, I don't have that.
Yep, I know which one you're talking about, now then.
Yeah, I agree.
That DD two.
That goes over to, at, the, the main ditch, we cleaned it over to that other gravel road, which would be, uh, I can't figure it out.
Anyway, Harris is in that area.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That was the first.
Yeah, you should have on the map, I just, I bet the, uh, the map I have doesn't have the road marked on it, but it's, it's a separate map with your quote there.
Okay. Okay. So what we need is.
And that would, that one definitely needs to be done folier too, because they've got a pretty, pretty high stem density in parts of it.
Good.
So otherwise, the other ditches all looked, uh, like I would expect, you know, that's some little stuff getting, coming back here or there.
Good.
Just ba- basic maintenance.
Good. Just keeping top of it.
Yeah, so, and also, I guess, to remind you, uh, for insurance purposes, if you could, uh, somehow Mark approved on each one of those quotes, that would, that would roll them over to a contract. And as I explained before, what that does is if I assign contracts with my customers, then you are automatically additionally insured on my insurance, insurance policy.
Okay.
Okay.
We will, we will do that.
And then if you could, uh, I don't know, just maybe if you want to just, uh, email me back a copy that, you know, it says accepted in the date with the signature, and then, you know, chances are, nothing will ever happen, I mean, the only time we've had any major problems in, uh, drainage is when we had a fish kill case back in two thousand six. And that's when we found out that we need to have additionally insured on our policy for our customers.
Okay, sounds good. Um, any other questions?
Just a motion to.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to.
A motion to approve the, uh, BMW spray quotes.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion and second, any further discussion? You're not all in favor, I?
All right.
All right.
I, both, motion or theory? We will allow you guys to spray our drainage ditches, and we'll get the, uh, those maps or whatever you need signed and, and email back to you for your insurance treatments. those maps or whatever you need signed and, and email back to you for your insurance treatments.
Okay, that works, and hopefully this world changes back to something a little more normal, we can actually get together sometime.
Sounds good, so. All right, thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
With that, thank you.
All right. Um, then the DOT thing.
Skip it.
Let's get that, so it becomes Winnebago's.
Is there a Zoom link that we're gonna need to?
Um, on the top of that agenda, there was.
Just click on that, and we were able to log into it.
I don't know if you can click on it, but.
It was highlighted, I didn't try it, but it looked like we should do this, tap on it, just like. It was a YouTube link.
There was a number, there's a call-in number, and then a participate, participant code. Otherwise, the other one was just view, listen only. For the streaming.
I'd say live stream there is correct, yeah. Okay, so that's, yeah, tomorrow, and worry about that then. Uh, any claims for drainage?
No, I'm gonna have a bunch of them next time.
About our general claims. You guys see any?
And did you get to look at it yet, or?
It's understandable, and you got the people you need, doing this work is gone, so. Uh, all right, if there's no questions, the claims, take most to approval, so move. Motion of second, no discussion? All in favor, aye? What about Beckos? All right, uh, how about Jason Petersburg?
Looks like about twenty minutes ago, we did receive some draft documents from Jeff.
I saw that email come through, but I obviously have not looked at it yet.
I will review them. Provide feedback on my end. Looks like next Monday it should become official.
Hopefully, yeah, let's, yeah, if you want to review it, and we'll look at it too, I guess, and maybe we can get it put on for next Monday's meeting and get that done, so we can get our construction going.
Uh, contractors will probably be up there this afternoon getting started on some of the items that they can that overlap between both options. And seal my train we get here tomorrow, I do expect that they'll likely be there working all week, getting started on the sanitary sewer work that, that can accommodate both options. Other than that, we're, we need this approval of this deed, so we can proceed full speed.
Sure. Yeah, hopefully, so we can get it done, so. Did they, did they make contact with that fireworks guy across the road about possibly hooking him up yet, or?
I gave him that guy's phone number when we met last Tuesday morning, and I told them to contact him to see if he wants a sewer service, because it'd be the time to do it now.
Sure.
Well, doesn't he have to do that, I mean, in order to, he's gotta have a building up within a year, so he doesn't have to have sewer, huh? Yeah, but he hasn't had sewer service, either.
Well, he doesn't have it yet.
Was that part of your terms when? Welcome Center?
The Welcome Center, I sold it to him, yeah.
So if we, then we'd have to put the line underneath the sewer. I mean, you think that'd be the agreement, if we actually sewer there, then we have to build.
I'm not sure, Jason, exactly, that was, you know.
Would there be an agreement that we could look up?
I know on our property, that's how it would be.
Yes, I, I don't know, that's before me, so.
The Welcome Center's property.
Hey, Jason or AJ, Sheriff Fink here, just, do we have any contact numbers for the contractors out there in case we have an emergency or any kind of thefts or anything that we have to contact them on from my office?
Yes, I can forward that to you.
Okay, that'd be appreciated.
Um, yeah, I guess maybe we can check with Jeff and see if there's, if he has any documents on that or not. Um, otherwise, we'll just let it, let him make that decision, I guess, if he wants to get sewer under there. Well, there's a check on that, that won't hold a lot of things up. And just, if they're gonna contact him, that'd be it for his best interest, that'd be the perfect timing for him.
Absolutely. We are, we are putting the Y in, so he can connect to it as part of the project, but the service line across Wheelerwood was not part of the project, so.
Right, right.
And when things are official, we should probably get the survey to Marilyn, so she can do the nine-one addresses, so they know the locations for Dan.
Yeah, do that, Jason, when, when we do get this official, um, send the, uh, the plat official plans over to Marilyn Stainer in the sheriff's office. Start working on her nine-one-one addresses, so then at least we'd have a uh, contact there if something did happen as well. I know she's ready for it, as soon as we give her the plan, she's ready to, she's, she's running about ninety-nine percent on her nine-one-one stuff, she's really doing a fantastic job, so she's, as soon as we give her the word go, she's gonna have all those addresses figured out for us, so.
Perfect.
Other than that, anything else for Jason? You got any else, Jason, you all good?
I think I'm good.
All right, thank you. Uh, people's service, Chris, you online?
I'm here.
How's things going?
Going really good, actually, um, with, uh, no flow out here, the wastewater plant, I was really concerned, but, uh, actually, it's running very well, we're doing, uh, the results I got back like last week, uh, BOD were down at six, and TFS was at five, so it's actually running as well as you could ever ask it to.
Good, good, that's good, hopefully it'll, it'll change and get our flows back here soon, but for now, I guess. Run with it, right?
That's right. And the water system's been doing good, um, I did flush hydrants a month ago, you know, the, we're, the casino thought maybe they could open on like April first, that we flushed hydrants on May, or, uh, excuse me, March thirty-first, but we did that earlier this spring to help clean out the mains. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Still working on the treatment plant siding?
Yep, they, they'll have, they got three sites done, they're working on the north side today, and they probably should get done today.
Okay.
Looks nice.
Sounds good. All right, and Chris? Okay, thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Do we have any reports?
Nope.
More reports, payroll eligibility? Salary changes?
I have one.
Payroll eligibility for Reagan Rierson? Take a motion to approve the payroll eligibility? Second, motion of second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Emotional carry. Department heads.
Sure.
Sure, Dan. How you doing, my friend?
We're doing, um, if you haven't seen, uh, the Winnebago project, we got that handled on Saturday, we got a little cleanup, and we'll have that done. Um, thank goodness. The OMG project, we got all those installed last week, so hopefully when Joel and I can shake some time loose here, we'll start looking at the first net stuff and starting to get some bids on that. Um, otherwise, on COVID stuff and all that, um, getting the time back from the project, we've been working on the river, um, we'll be able to get going on that, but we're sitting good on all that. We are opening up a few of the things for the department today, um, we got some judgment and sentences coming in uh, to serve time and, and our fingerprinting and that, so, um, any questions anybody else has, I'll take.
No, no, I'm glad that, uh, Winnebago's is done, and now we can, uh, get back to more regular scheduled business, I guess, so. Thank you. Uh, Mark Tomlinson, you have anything new?
Not today, I don't, it's pretty much been, uh, business as usual for the last week or so. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Auditor, anything new with you? Recorder said she's got nothing. Um, assessor's office, Cindy, you have anything?
Two at home and two working.
Cindy's got nothing, I see in her chat there, um, Jim Hanson, anything new with you?
With the governor's declaration last Friday, the, our parks are gonna continue to be closed through her May fourteenth, as well as the shelter houses within the parks, so.
Okay, just still kind of stay under the state guidelines for that, and don't change it, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that, anything else, Jim?
Nope, nothing else for me.
How about, uh, Jake Hanson, I see you got your chat.
What are we gonna do?
I don't know.
You probably start school up on the lawn for the milk cans that buried a hundred years ago? Good luck with that. Half a million dollars short on the budget because of that.
There won't be a half million. Because that's to everybody that gets the portion from that.
But still.
Could be a fairly large sum of money, but, you know. Fifty thousand, hundred thousands, not way too much. So hopefully, I guess. I get everybody?
Just for my office, uh, we did sign the contract with the pathways for the storage, that'll be, we're, uh, um, move forward on that when they can get some schedule time to be up here, so. And then I'll, I approach you guys on the VR and the service. Um, we haven't signed that contract until that's being stable. I'll probably approach you guys on that too, just to professionalize.
I think I got everybody, didn't I? Supervisor Weekly.
I just had one Zoom meeting with, uh, uh, partners for children.
Yeah, I just did one Zoom meeting to the central aisle of juvenile detention. Yes, financials a little bit, also discuss some COVID stuff. Have an isolation area there, so they have had some kids who COVID, you know, and it's very little isolate their big enough facility. Um, they also, financially, we're doing real well, we got a building project that's just kind of still in the early stages, they're also looking at adding kind of mental health services for the children, you know, um, psychologically in-house, so we don't have to transfer to do that, so that's something that'll be coming down the road. Of that facility, so it's good to know. Only the go-getter.
Aggressive.
I mean, it's not great to spend money, but it also, it also works, and, I mean, it all comes out of our pockets, of course, but, I mean, it's, uh, he's doing a good job managing that and growing the facility. And taking care of the kids too, there's, hopefully there's kids going back out of there, or it sounds like that they're not, they're not, some come back in, but a lot of them are going on.
High percentage is staying out.
Staying out, which is good, that's, that's could be the long-term goal of any facility like that, so.
I didn't have anything last week, so. Anything coming up that we need to put on the agenda?
Not knowing until Governor Manas talks today.
If nothing else, come for the board, I'll take most to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, aye? Meeting as adjourned, thank you, everybody.